Twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three.
Right here.
Word session. Board. Mr. Baker.
Do we, if we sit in here with a question?
Sit down.
So we have the approval and the adoption, just going with the agenda, the regular agenda, approval and adoption of November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, regular section and word sessions. If you have any questions, comments, concerns. Presentations, the presentations for the Mon Police Department of the January fourth, and Tina Hendricks to the rank of second. The January promotional for Captain Wilson to the rank of captain sergeant, sergeant first from the second. And then Lieutenant Vice to the rank of captain. All those are captain, of course. New business, approval city manager's recommendation to accept the agreement with the Man School of Oil Services for one year contract for fuel services to the C M R. Mr. Baker.
Yeah, this is exciting. Good evening, mayor council and citizens. This is a, a, we currently use Mansfield Oil for our fuel supply under the state contract. Brandon had checked into some, we've been looking around for some other alternatives, cheaper maybe gas and oil supplies. Actually, Mansfield Oil has a agreement with the, with the, on another contract issue we can do. This is one that would, it's on Sourcewell, which we've used in the past for bidding. It's recognized for state bids and other things. This is substantially lower for us to do it this way as far as the add-on for the, on the O V S pricing, which is the oil price information systems, which is what our bulk rates based on, is two percent for administrative fees with state contract. If we go with the one-year agreement that I put up here for you, it is about point zero three hundred percent to point four hundred percent lower than what we're currently paying. So I mean, that seem like a lot. Currently, on average, we're getting about five thousand gallons of gasoline, of eighty-seven octane gasoline, and around sixteen hundred gallons of diesel. So throughout the time, over the months, it adds up. It's just a savings for us, and it would be essentially the same supplier and save some more money.
Questions, Mr. Baker?
No questions.
Mr. Baker.
No questions.
Mr. Clark.
So five thousand gallons annually or monthly?
Monthly, yes, sir, yeah. And, and most of our cars run on that. Some, some months we skip to diesel because it's primarily, almost completely, except for a couple of other vehicles for the fire department.
But that, that, but that's not one percent means.
Makes, makes a big difference.
Thank you. Mr. Dean.
Yes, sir.
As you know, we've got one thing that was just handed out, a second year we need to add that to the agenda, and it's related to, we talked a little bit before, cars becoming complicated supply chain issues, and they're talking about being able to pick up four of them and allocate every sizable amount of money. Coming out of the budget, it's already there, this is two hundred fifty thousand dollars expenditure to make a bill. We talked at the last council meeting, we basically said that if they began to make a strategic strike to pay more, and this looks like that is carrying that out or trying to carry that. Mr. Baker.
Correct. Captain Smith, you will come forward with me. Get on the agenda, I have a memo that I just handed out. You've got the sticker for the vehicles, which are the state contracts from wage. You also have the outfitting, and even though these would be acquired, we're able to grab them now, it'll be kind of a due-to, due-front from next year's twenty twenty-five budget because it'll allocate the cars for that year. Always a concern is the rotation of the fleet to make sure that we're keeping new cars coming in. These cars probably, based on the supply chain, will not be outfitted for at least until March or April of this year anyway. But securing those cars is what's critical. Captain Smith, did some of the background on, let me speak on that.
Yes, sir. So I've talked to several of the fleet dealerships, and Ford basically, because they finished out in twenty-three model year, not taking new orders for twenty-four models. So next year, we'll be ordering ones in twenty-five. Talking about lower production in the next summer, by the time it hits lots, they're estimated in January twenty twenty-five, so by the time it gets outfitted, anywhere from April to July twenty twenty-five. So we need to strike when we can to get these cars to make sure we have enough going forward.
Questions, Mr. Baker?
So with regard to our replacement strategy for the cars, explain to us a little bit more so that we understand how we're gonna attack the money part.
Sure. And on those, we do, there's currently, if you look, there's a fleet report at the back that package I just gave you. It shows that there's a couple of vehicles currently in the process of being outfitted that we acquired last year. So if you count, that's like five, four months ago, almost four and a half months. So we're going to stay kind of on schedule. We're just acquiring them a little bit earlier than I would like to, but I think circumstances dictate that we do that. It still keeps us on the rotational schedule, replacement schedule. We have four vehicles coming in for fiscal year twenty twenty-five anyway, so this is those vehicles. Obviously, they won't be on budget for twenty twenty-five, but essentially, by the time they're equipped, late May, June, somewhere in there, then we should be, it won't have a much deleterious effect on it because it's only bound one month swag on the acquisition of them.
Mr. Baker.
So in the previous council meeting, we approved to buy four police cars, two hundred forty, and also, is this different with what we look at this map?
It, it is. Last council meeting, what I've requested is the latitude to grab hold of some if we could. These, we were able to get ahold of these, Captain Smith found them. We didn't have to put down a down payment or anything else, and it gave me time to put them before you as a council when we received the information. I think it was last week, whenever we got that holiday swag, but they gave us time to be upfront to you, as I promised last council meeting, we put it before you before we did anything on the vehicles, but it gave us the latitude and just kind of awareness that we would have to do this to secure vehicles because of strike, supply chain issues, et cetera.
And before I highlighted roles in the report that we were given, I see that a proof report, and though the replacement ones, are we replacing with this pool?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
I'm seeing, it's so small, and I just saw this before. So you have a report, so appear to be the fleet report in the last page of the package that provided to the council. The, there are four roles that are highlighted.
I see, I see, we showed on there the, actually, those are running reports, so I'm gonna let Captain Smith, he's the one who keeps up the, so they explain that.
So ma'am, previously, we had done three digits model years in the last few years to keep them in line. We did some renumbering last summer, and that's just so we can keep track of one-on-one. It's now unit ten, one oh two is now twelve in the fuel system.
I'll come to it back to you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Clark.
I have no question.
Mr. Dean.
I do have one question. These vehicles will be ready to go into service in twenty?
Twenty twenty-four, we're looking at probably. At J P or so, a lot of outfitters, the current one was bought in July, are being outfitted in December, so if you're looking at five months, it stays about the same, five, six months, and maybe April, May.
And it's not just the acquisition of cars, yeah, for the equipment.
That's my question. So is there anything new coming on, as far as the equipment is concerned, change out something that you're gonna look forward to, maybe?
Bicycles.
No, in the cars, I mean, to do that, you know, anything that's upgraded or any models or anything inside the car that's gonna be changed.
No, ma'am, the same goal for equipment right here is the same stuff that we're having been on before, we just practice their current being outfitted.
Okay, so if we change out the whole mechanism inside, we do those at the same time, the new ones, and the ones that are in service?
No, it, it, it'll, it'll be the same equipment as the last few, but we have several different variations of equipment over the years inside of the vehicles. Because stuff changes, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, they change the model inside from fifteen to nineteen, it changes as it goes.
And it's mostly configuration issues in the car, but also, the car's kind of unequipped, so you're just buying the car, and then you have to buy the equipment, and then we have to take it again, install it, and then stripe and everything else, so it's, it's a, it's a process on getting ready.
Coming back to you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you for that. So could I get this package emailed to me?
Sure, we'll do that.
Thank you. And also, for the prior part, four cars that we bought, we approved in the previous meeting, which ones are they replaced in this list?
When we say replacement, I think that you're taking that literally. The replacement schedule we do is replacing the vehicle fleet. As the age of the vehicle and the requirements of the vehicle for maintenance, et cetera, exceed its valuation, that's when we take it out of service. Would be unwise of us to just say that it's eighty thousand miles, we're taking it off the, off the fleet, which sometimes that happens beforehand if it's wrecked or anything else, but we have a lot of units that are called spare units that are sitting on back that they have. In case a vehicle's down, in case a vehicle has to have a motor swap or something, as you've seen in some of the notes there on the, on the maintenance.
So is this the report for the police department only?
For the, for the fleet?
Yes.
Other questions?
No further questions. I'm still looking through the fleet report to see the status of our car, because I see we have majority of our car here is new, some of that less than a hundred miles, pretty new, and probably few over a hundred times a mile. And we just approved for buying four cars on this pool, we have total of eight. Could I get an understanding, which car is that, in that eight cars that we're replacing? Which one is that in this list? Are we adding more cars?
We're adding more cars, as I stated, as the cars need to come off, and I understand you look at it and say, well, there's only a hundred, hundred twenty-five thousand miles. Totally different type of mileage it's put on the patrol car because of the excessive speed sometimes, the stop and starts, et cetera, driving around straight for twelve hours. It's a lot different where you're tearing a car than the standard car. Most places, we'll pull them off the line at a hundred thousand. We have a really good maintenance program because of the maintenance, first we added it, pellet works, oil is maintained, vehicles are maintained. Sometimes we squeeze a little extra life, but you never know when somebody may have a wreck or mishap or something happens, and that's why we keep them in until we need to rotate them off, and it doesn't become cost-effective, and that's a criteria, it's cost-effectiveness of keeping the unit online.
Thank you.
And remember, we'll add it to the agenda once we get to the actual council meeting. I think next we have walking.
How's everybody? Hello, everyone. All right, we are excited, we are excited, and so I'm gonna calm down because I've been so excited, I've been hollering at them, so I apologize publicly for hollering at you all, okay? Which one is that, my holiday? Okay. What we wanted to do, we created a short presentation to show you all what we've done for, not really the last year, but pretty much the last six months, fifteen months. We have been very busy. And as you can see, we have grown, and we're continuing to grow. So the teams created this presentation, but just like a parent, you know how they kind of keep you out of the loop? So I don't know what they're gonna say, but I know that they're representing me and they're representing you all. So I'm gonna step to the side until they tell me when to come in, okay? So I'm gonna turn it over to the president, Prada Day.
Hi, everyone. So I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to the city council today. Like Ms. Adams mentioned, we will just be giving a brief summary about the past six to eight months, so I'll go ahead and introduce myself. My name's Prada Day, I currently attend Forest Park High School as a senior, and I have been so grateful to be the president of Walking in Authority City Council for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Jeremy Kansperman. I am a sophomore attending moral high school, and so that's Walking in Authority's first vice president.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Beely, and I'm currently attending moral high school as a sophomore, and I am serving as the temporary second vice president of Walking in Authority.
Okay, so if you all would turn your attention to the monitors, you all would see the groundbreaking that we so very, we just appreciate you all for the vision, for the inclusiveness, and the support and encouragement that you all have given us, you know, since we've been youth council officially for moral. And I do want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Baker for opening those doors, and for Victor, for his unwavering support. I kind of look back a little bit from when Victor first filled out his application to be a part of the team council when he was in high school, and I showed it to him because I don't grow away anything, but he's grown now. So if you all would look and see that's just such a pivotal point in our growth, is to see this groundbreaking. So now, I'm told I'll step back.
Okay, so next we have the youth symposium in Dublin that we attended in twenty twenty-two. So in Dublin, we traveled there, and we got to participate in a variety of youth activities to show how we could not only network in a more casual environment, but also team those through a lot of those activities. You see that we asked, there's some axes, that was an interesting experience, and more importantly, we also got to go to Dublin's city hall, and we got to win the team court program in practice, and it was an amazing experience just to see how some of our future teens can become future lawyers.
Most recently, we had our National League of Cities Summit, and when we got our tags right out at the bottom of our name, it said Moro, Georgia. We represented the city of Moro, and I believe we did an excellent job. We were able to go ahead and network with very high-standard individuals such as the CEO of Starbucks, and even the corporate of Amazon. We were able also to gain more knowledge on municipal and cities, and how to benefit from that, as well as how to bring in more knowledge to make Moro a better place. And that was just such an amazing experience. And our team, we were also able to make a lot of friendships from different states around the country, so it was a really great experience.
So last month, we get to, took a trip to Lawrence, Georgia, which we get to meet like a lot of teens across Georgia, and we get to partake in a lot of activities that enhance our skills such as networking, budgeting, and finance. And also, we get to like listen to a lot of keynote key speakers, which like about, I believe, life after college, which help us a lot in the future, and that was such an amazing experience for me.
And now we have N O C in twenty twenty-two, so this was last year. A lot of these people you see in these, these photos are alumnus now, they have graduated, but from speaking to them, their experiences were transformative, especially in now that they're in college. They got to tour around D C, they got to network with international base of other youth team councils, and overall, it was a very transformative experience just to see and be in a room full of adults that hold very high titles, and just to be able to communicate with them and not feel less than, but feel almost welcome to join that environment.
Next, we have the Hispanic Heritage Celebration. Now, this did take place during one of our meetings, and I personally created or gave the idea since I was operating this, because I feel like diversity is such an important and crucial factor to have, not only within our cities, but also within our team council, because as teens, we are the future, so it's very important that we exemplify diversity. And during this celebration itself, we were also able to engage in a variety of cultures, so we have presentations, we were able to eat different types of foods, and we're also able to participate in different cultural games.
This was the spaghetti fundraising raiser, which like we aim to create a fun, so we can like go to the youth symposium that we planned, and so basically, in the event, members were divided into each role, like some react, some serve as like servers, and some are like waiters, and then we also get to make a lot of meaningful connections there. Me particularly, I get to talk to like this young lady, she like gave me a lot of experience about like college and tips on how to like apply to college and things like that. And also, on one of the picture, you can see that our president, Peta, being interviewed by the general to news.
And then we have another youth symposium, it was the Georgia Municipal Association one, it was in Atlanta, it was, it was during this year. Since we was at home, we got to travel there, and we did stay at home, so thankfully, we were very grateful for that. And we got to listen to a lot of keynote speakers that practice here at Atlanta, and we got to participate in a variety of very unique games that call as patience, like bouncing at egg and trying to run towards a bucket as fast as possible with our team, and we also were split off into different youth councils, so we didn't stay within our comfort zone, they very much pushed us outside of that and allowed us to interact with other youth.
Next, we have our anti-teenage initiative, and I brought this up to Ms. Adams because I attend moral high school, and one thing that I've noticed is teens are starting to make a lot, especially inside the building and outside of the building. I'm not sure that's something that you guys are aware about, but I feel like teens personally, they do this because it's a trend or like school, but they don't really know the actual outcomes that come from this. There have been teens that have unfortunately died from this, and I really think it's important that we raise awareness to this issue. And while trying to convey this, we have talked to the school board about this, and we're trying to go ahead and have sessions with different city councils in order to further convey this issue and actually come up with an initiative.
Um, this is the seven CDs initiative, where we like pick up trash around the, across seven CDs in Georgia, and particularly, there's a picture that depicts us picking trash in the city of Moro, and then we also get to like network with a lot of people around the communities, and we get to like, oh, and the event was to promote eco-friendly activities.
And next we have our student ambassador program. We've been participating in this program for well over three years, I believe. So far, we have won region five as first place in the past two years, and this year we aim to win first place in the overall state. But for those who don't know, the Georgia Secretary of State Student Ambassador Program basically promotes civic engagement through a competition, a point-based competition. So it rewards civic engagement activities such as working as a poll election official or attending civic engagement meetings like this with points, and then at the end of the year, all of our points are tallied, and whoever has the most gets a trophy and gets bragging rights, I guess. So as you can see in a variety of these photos, we attended a student board meeting. We, I myself work as a poll election officer, and then right below here, you can see some of our teens that took some local community events.
One of my favorite volunteer projects was the Atlantic History Museum Volunteer Project, and within this, we were all, we were able to look at documents and documentaries from some of the very last World War II veterans, and what we did here is we were able to organize these documents, look over them, make sure that all the information was accurate, especially when we looked over the actual interviews, we had to make sure that the dates and the times were on point. So that was very fun, and one actual opportunity that we got from this was future interviews, which in my opinion is really, really good opportunity.
Next up, we have the M L K parade, in which we like march around the community, and then we get to like network with local people, and then the purpose of the event was to promote awareness about working in authority, to spread words about working in authority, and make people know about it more, so they can help their children apply to the council.
And then we have the Moon Festival. This experience was very culturally enriching overall to our team council, especially because we have such a diverse student body, as you already mentioned. A lot of our teens got to volunteer the day out and help facilitate some of the games, and one of our alumnus, which is actually my sister, participated as one of the dancing lines. I think she did okay, it's her first time, so if you ever see a video of her doing it, give her some slack.
Next, the C C B S student orientation. Here, we were able to set up our cable and talk to the youth. This gave us an opportunity to talk to youth, talk more all about, and hopefully get in some applications, and we were able to do that, which we were very successful at. Additionally, this thing gave our teens a chance to collect school supplies and learn more about the different programs and departments when it comes to the Clayton County School of Education.
This is, um, this event is the Jonesy Place Plant Opening, in which we helped setting up the activities and games and food, so we get to network with a lot of people, I believe, and we also get to talk and have fun. It was like kind of like a fun event, rather, so we get to get volunteer hours, and we get to eat a lot of.
We appreciate the standing ovation, but we did notice that none of our teens stood up for us. It's okay. As you all can see, we've done a whole lot, and I apologize, it was the last year, I thought it was six to eight months, that's how they had me going and coming, but we want to continue having you all support, and as we look forward to making the arrangements for the National League of Cities Congressional Conference in March, please consider that, we have no money. We, we could sell some more spaghetti, but that may not get, and today is given Tuesday, so if you are looking for a nonprofit to give to, please consider Walking in Authority Team Council. We're trying to get to D C, okay? Why are you looking around? I couldn't get to buy a new piece of spaghetti.
But I donated money.
Yes, you did. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I love you so much. But that's what, what we wanted to show you all, to kind of let you know what we've been doing, and so I really want to take them now to go their grounds, so we can eat, and then they can get home, because they still have homework to do. Do you all have any questions of us?
Congratulations.
So for the fundraising, do you have a, an amount that you're trying to reach?
We're trying to raise twenty thousand dollars today. Because what happens is, the hotel, the hotel prices go up per night. This thing in Washington is such a rich opportunity, we're only taking eight. The hotel room is three sixty-two a night, the airfare is three sixty-six round trip, the transportation from the airport to the hotel and back, we're gauging about fifty-five dollars to get a, a train pass, and therefore, if we want to do anything else, we can just hop on the train. The tour, if we take it, it's sixty-five dollars per person. The meals that are not provided, that we have to provide, or, you know, because really, if you look at Clayton County, this is a low-income community, and I would hate for them not to be able to go, because their parents don't have the funds or the opportunity to raise the funds. It, it's really, uh, it's a injustice, especially when they have things at school that they have to pay for. Some of them may not even be able to go to the prom or even a senior trip anymore, because a senior trip costs so much. Their robe, they have to pay for their robes, their captain, the captain down, they have to pay for everything. Sports, they have to pay for stuff. There used to be booster clubs paying. There used to be booster clubs paying, it's not anymore. And so I try to operate this at an inconvenience to me, but maybe not to them and the parents.
When is the trip?
I'm sorry. The trip is in March, March, March the eleventh through the thirteenth, but we want to get there on the tenth. And so we can relax and maybe take a tour. Because they've only seen those monuments, those historical monuments, only in a book. I would love to take all of them, but I want to come back as a non-alcoholic person that I am and drug-free. I don't want to.
A little stressed?
But I would love to take them. And we have places here in Georgia that I want to take them to. I want them to learn about Georgia history, Georgia's history. So we're just gonna continue to try to raise funds and do what we have to do. And beg, borrow, we won't steal.
Thank you, thank you for what you do. I really appreciate you and the kind of time. To me, it's just really important to dedicate your time for the kids and enhance their personality, skill, awareness, all that. That really, to me, that I see is really impact to a lot of young people.
You know, one of the most frightening things is to publicly speak. And they came out of their comfort zone to publicly speak. And I don't know if you can tell, they were nervous, but they did an amazing job. And we have some of the others out here that's gonna come out of their comfort zone. Because I generally stand in the back and if I can't hear them, and I do have hearing aids, I do do like this and they understand that speaking out and speaking up because they have a voice. They have a voice, they're the future. And if we don't tap into them now, we're gonna lose them to another community.
I want them to know, I want you guys to know that we're really proud of you.
Who told me at sixty-nine, oh, sixty-eight or something like that, I'd be up here with these children. But I appreciate you all, I love you all, I'm ground out to them. You all ready? Okay, help me out.
The regular section of theede Marsley Council will start at seven thirty. As stated many times in the past, we have some wonderful coffee right inside that door. I recommend, I'm praying that Mr. Baker has actually produced some that wasn't from this morning. That was hot, it's a pale osear. So I appreciate about the coffee, it's gonna be some, and we'll be back here at seven thirty.